Well, this meeting of the City of Del Rapids Council to order and we welcome those in attendance this evening. And those of you who are watching via the web, we appreciate your interest in city government. The last finance office, please call the roll.
Schmidt?
Here.
Porter?
Hock?
Here.
Garrett?
Here.
Chris?
Here.
Meyer?
Here.
Ron Songen?
Here.
Burr?
Here.
Mayor Early?
Here.
Keeping in mind Wednesday is July 4th, maybe we should pay particular attention to the words we're gonna say right now. I pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You have any agenda for this evening? Some move by Bob to approve the agenda. Do we have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Gary, all favor signified by saying aye.
Aye.
I oppose nay, motion Gary. Approval of the minutes from the June 18th regular meeting.
I make motion to approve.
Moved by Gary to approve minutes.
I'll second that motion.
Seconded by Mr. Garrett. All favor signified by saying aye. I oppose nay, motion Gary. Now it's time for any visitors who are here to be heard and I think we're in good shape. Deputy, anything you need to report to the council and opportunity for them to ask any questions they might have.
Well, it looks like I have a lot, but this is just scribble from other things. My name is Phil Ryan, I'm new to the sheriff's office. I joined in March. I'll be up in Del Rapids quite often. But I've been a police officer for over 10 years, so they're not throwing all the rookies at you guys. So I hope you guys appreciate that. We enjoy the opportunity to serve the City of Del Rapids. Do you have anything for the sheriff's office that I can pass on?
Is that Phil, one guy that retired?
Well, we're having a lot of retirements.
I just saw him on Kellman.
Preston.
Preston.
Oh, Preston.
Cause he used to serve here.
Yeah.
No, I filled a slot of another retirement that was earlier in the year.
10th Street doesn't do it.
I sent an email, I don't know if it made it down the way. Yeah, 10th Street by the new section of road. Yep. It's, there's been some.
I've been getting some phone calls that people saying flying through there or not.
10th and.
Right by the hospital.
Yeah.
West of the hospital. They're not compliant above the line either. They just run that corner and way around.
That's what I've been getting phone calls on.
Okay.
I've seen it.
Can I scan after that?
Thanks Gary.
Look for a black fork.
My commercial license plate.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's easy for people to cut the corners and whatever. There's, and you know, 10th Street has become, the amount of traffic on 10th Street is just getting to be something else. And I'm on 10th and Clark and that people, so many people roll through those stop signs. I just don't know why somebody don't get there.
And we've had problems at the hospital backing in the ambulance too.
Yeah.
Okay. Could you go around someplace?
In Clark and 10th where you're at today that, I don't know.
Yeah.
The HydroClean guy?
HydroClean, they were there. Somebody came from the south, I was coming from the grocery store. Didn't even stop. And they zipped around behind them, going to Clark North. And I was coming on 10th. I hit the brakes and they just kept on, pulled rigor on the truck, didn't even stop.
Yeah. I don't know, some people are, whatever. But anyway, yeah, it, yeah, it'll, you know, it's not gonna go away. It's, it's part of turf, I guess.
It is.
I was speaking with the deputy before the meeting started and apparently, you know, quarantine days, everything went well. I think we had no significant incidents, I guess, and so that's, that's just good. And I commend the chamber and the way they set that up and the people who gets to help out too. So that's, that's a good thing, so, good weekend, so. Well, thank you, appreciate your being here in Dells and anytime, you're always obviously welcome to be at the meeting.
Thank you.
And, you know, just your primary contact with any issues.
Sounds good, alright, thank you.
Thank you deputy, appreciate it. Moving on to old business, wastewater treatment, SBR facility. We have three items tonight, Justin.
Yeah, we have a few items to discuss here and take action on. First, what you have in front of you is an agreement with, his name is Bob Montes. He, Robert Montes, he is a class three wastewater certified operator. His main employer is the city of Sioux Falls. And we have engaged Bob to sign off on our discharge permit with the D E N R. The, what we've worked out with Bob is that he will come on site a few hours per week to make sure that, you know, everything is, looks like it's operating well, to provide advice. And, and as long as we are meeting our limits, he will be helping with that. And so he will be signing the permits when we send in our test results on a weekly basis and a monthly basis. So that the permit would be under his name. He's willing to do that. You know, right now, at the outset, it might be a few more than the five hours per week we're talking about because we're getting our lab set up. And he's gonna help us kind of with lab protocols and the lab process. So he's actually, he's gonna be here on Thursday this week to help us with that. So with that, it's a $50 an hour, an agreement that he has agreed to do. It is for a period of one year, is what he has agreed to at this point. So if the council has any questions?
What is, how does his works get, is he in eight to five every day? Or is he have one day a week?
His, his, they go on rotations. He'll have some night shifts as well.
So that he would be able to be in Del Rapids when our people are on?
Well, that.
I mean, I guess I'm just wondering how.
Right.
Like is he giving work in the.
His work schedule.
He will coordinate with us, but his main priority is the city of Sioux Falls. He will not interfere, and that's written in here, that he will not interfere with his, with his main job in Sioux Falls. But he will coordinate with us. If he works a night shift, he's off at 8:00 AM. He lives in Colton. He'll come here, he'll spend his half hour, hour with our guys checking stuff out and go back. We are discharging to the river now, as of yesterday, or as of today, sorry. We're meeting all of our limits, well under our limits. The UV plant is treating the bugs the way that they're supposed to. So our testing equipment is just arrived. Some of it arrived Friday, some of it arrived today. We're gonna be getting that installed. We've started installing some of that equipment so that those, we'll be able to have those tests. From right now, we're gonna do, we have to test three, three days per week. So we're testing Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday this week in succession and sending those lab results off and documenting those. And Bob's gonna help with us to come up with a way to document everything, the process for, for the affluent and affluent and the time of day and all that kind of good stuff. It's a really, really big learning curve. Clarence and Ryan are taking it under their wings and, but it's definitely a big learning curve at this point. And Bob's been really helpful. He's been out on site a few times already. He knows what waste looks like, if it's healthy or not, just looking at it. So, and he's got, he's got some tricks of the trade that he's gonna pass on and we're lucky to have found him and have him helping us right now. So just recommend approving this agreement.
And, you know, what we've talked about is, you know, setting up protocols, policies, process and all that. And obviously, he doesn't have to rebuild the wheel here, you know. But it's his knowledge base and how, what, how that works in with the Sioux Falls system. So that, that, that should, you know, fall in place, I think. You know, it's gonna take some work and effort obviously, but still it's.
I think your motion to approve.
Moved by Gary to approve the agreement with Mr. Montes. Seconded by Mike, any other questions? All favor, signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay, motion Mr. Garrett.
The second item is, is in front of you, is a quote from Dakota Pump and Control. They are the outfit that has provided and installed all of the, the SCADA equipment that's currently on the site. We asked a quote for them, just ignore this first page. This is the booster tank, or booster station, old tank and new tank. That's, that's the water side of things and we just wanted to get a quote. So we knew what it would cost, if we ever wanted to consider that in the future. The main things for now would be the SCADA software and additional fluid integration. So what this would do is, everyone saw the computer out at the wastewater treatment facility when we, when we did our tour. There's a computer in the, in the main lab area and then when you go back into the mechanical room, that touchscreen. What that does is that it puts all of that data, current data onto a mobile device so that we can monitor from a mobile device. So if it's Ryan, or if it's Clarence, or if it's Bob, or anyone else that we would see that can log in and have an app on their phone or their computer where they would be able to see and view the current status of the plant offsite. For instance, we've had with the high flows, we had, you know, Clarence was up in the middle of the night dealing with stuff at the plant because he was getting alarms. He'd be able to pull that up on his phone and know why he's getting alarm. They're not just calling and giving him an alarm. You'd be able to see some of that right away, to know if he needs to go out there or not. It will also have limited ability to make controls too. You won't be able to control all the bells and whistles, but there'll be some of the basic standard stuff that you'll be able to make some adjustments from your mobile device with this, with this proposal. So what was it, 32?
Thirty-seven.
Thirty-seven, $3,700 and we've got our 55% funding through the D E N R with this. So the city cost would be $1,665. So with that, recommend we do that.
Move, move, move.
Moved by Mark to approve the Dakota Pump group for the improvements to the SCADA and the connection to Budine. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Bob, any other questions? All favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay, motion Gary. Fencing.
Fencing, I just passed that out. Gabe and I had been talking about fencing and Gabe said he would call American Fencing on our behalf. So what they did, in my notes, I'd stated this. This had been brought up during our tour, looking at securing the SBR itself for safety reasons. So this includes putting, there's two different options. One is to fence the north side, I think that's option number one. That would be between gates, so kind of the perimeter of the, of the roadside. And then the, the second would be to put six inch chain link fence with barbed wire on top surrounding the SBR structure. Two quotes to consider here. I guess my preference would be to do the, do the perimeter and not just the SBR. We're gonna spend money on fencing. We're securing the whole area, including the SBR building. And then just the, the fact of, of having to make, do maintenance on that SBR, putting a fence in by create difficulties with getting access into that facility from whatever angle that we, we need to do something in the future, I guess. If it's pulling hoists out or pulling pumps or whatever the case is, is being able to, to get around a fence. This is eligible to, for the 55% grant. So I guess keep that in mind when we're talking about this.
So did you talk to anybody owns?
No, this was just to get a quote on this to begin the discussion.
We've got Capus Fencing out of Crook and he does all kinds of fence. And I, I've had to work on a big Sioux project for fencing. And he's pretty reasonable. Probably anybody else has dealt with him or Mike Capus. I got his number.
So again, is this for just general, is this for a safety? Hey, we don't want somebody stumbling and digging around, looking and falling in?
That's, I, when I looked at it, I mean, you know, I'm not saying kids are out there, but I'm just saying something just to deter people. Cause you can easily walk in and fall in if you wanted to. You know, you've all seen it, but I just thought.
And knock it out.
And, yeah, maybe a fence as long ago would be enough to slow people from trying to go in there and look. But I, I just think a fence.
I was gonna say, what do most facilities do? Is there, there's no requirement?
There's no, like, I mean, our requirement, no. I mean, our insurance company might like it if we had something.
Most of the small towns have ponds. They don't have actual tanks. I mean, those tanks are the most.
Cause the Baltic just has ponds and.
No, I understand that difference, that's what I'm saying, other facilities that have.
I just thought, just looking at it, I thought, you know, a fence won't be a bad idea. And that's why I just said, just take a look at it. We don't have to do it, no.
Right.
But I mean, I just think a fence is probably a good idea.
So they'd be in there daytime or nighttime, why are you thinking they'd be in there?
Hard telling. You know, if kids are riding bikes, wanna run over there and take a look at it? Or, I'm just trying to secure it a little bit more. Maybe just a fence along the side of the road or a new fence along the side of the road would probably help.
I visited this morning with Justin about it, I think one other, one other thing that we need to think about is, you know, appropriate signage out there, you know. You know, obviously, if they, if they can read, the message should be, you know, you can, you can lose your life here if you fall in this sucker. You know, but, you know, whatever the appropriate word should be, but that, you know, we, right now, all we got is the, is the. Contaminated water. Well, you know, I'm sure there's appropriate signage out there and that could be added both, you know, close to the SBR and also at the gates as well. And, and, and all we're doing is, is trying to mitigate our liability, basically, I guess, if you look at it that way.
What's, like Sioux Falls, they're, I guess I.
Yeah, that's pretty restricted in Sioux Falls. I think you gotta. They don't have anybody sitting at the gate, but.
But as far as signage on their, their fence, what would, you know, would Bob be able to?
We could come up with signage.
You know.
That shouldn't be a problem. I agree with that completely and.
The fence is a little bit more than I thought it was gonna be.
Well, and like, maybe, this was one quote, this was one quote. So maybe we can find something cheaper, maybe it doesn't have to be six feet with barbed wire.
It's gated well, where you can't just drop in.
Yeah.
I'd say you can.
Well, I mean, do your new barbed wire fence, put up the new fence.
That's what I mean.
It's, get BX out there, let's put in new barbed wire.
New barbed wire.
Yeah. If they want it in there, they're gonna get, they'll walk around the south.
Right.
You know, we can't chain link a whole 40 acre piece.
I understand that, I just, when I looked at it, I thought.
Barking dogs and big lights.
Well, you know, maybe in the evening, you know, if you're playing, you know, you put up some sensor lights.
It's just a gate.
It's lit up at night, isn't it?
Yeah, it all, I just, I just thought, you know, we should just look into it, but it's more expensive than I thought.
There would be 55% funding, so now would be the time to do it, not.
But there's 55% funding on a new barbed wire fence too, wouldn't there?
I was gonna say, see what BX would say for the new barbed wire fence.
Two more quotes. The one, Barry and what BX?
How, how long do we have, how long do we have?
Till we close, till we close our lawn, we close, close out.
If you put up a four or five bar fence, I'm sure they're gonna crawl through that, I mean, you hear it tight, I mean. Right, but we were talking about, and Gary was talking about a fence just around those tanks.
Yeah, but we've, but we've got concerns about trying to access the tanks with a fence. We've got to get in there for maintenance.
Get the pumps or whatever.
Yes, access and pump, pull this stuff out. You're, you gotta clean stuff and pump, pump stuff out, if you gotta pump stuff out. That would be the concern there, is you have to set up gates and where are you gonna set your gates up at?
Oh, I guess I'd be open if getting, let's give, we can get a quote from BX, it's better. And then maybe if Barry wants to, or we can, you know, the more quotes, the better, I guess.
Yeah. What do you normally put up, a fence for four or five?
Normally put up four, but you should have five or six, cause kids, you know, they can slide. What I think of is, let's say two 10-year-old boys are out there on bicycles. Let's go over and look at that, what's in that tank anyway? You know, if they get over there and say they're starting to horse around a little bit, one pushing the other. If you, if one of them kids would happen to fall in on one of them 20-foot tanks, you'd be dead. Cause there's no way you can climb out, there's no ladders out of there, when that thing is churning. And the other thing is about our, our facility doesn't really face it and isn't real close to it. I mean, somebody could even be in the building and not, not see it, there's kids out there playing or, you know, goofing around.
And not see it.
And, and they ain't gonna do it necessarily, and people are out there either. They'll pick it like about now, you know, they go out there at night. But if a couple of kids are just horsing around, one pushes the other one, and would happen to go in there, it wouldn't be good. I'll tell you that, but, but to answer your question, you know, if you got like a six, good tight six bar fence or, or a woven wire and, you know, four or five, you know, a good, a good tight tall fence, it will pretty much keep most people out, but a young boy can climb over a tight good fence.
Again, no matter what we have out there, if somebody wants that bed to get in there.
So the reason I'm asking is, so he can talk to BX and say, hey, bid us a five bar fence.
Yep.
It's gonna be different than four bar or three bar or what have you.
But there isn't much there now. I mean, you know, kids can walk in from the road, you know, ride their bikes up there and walk in, there's nothing.
The wire's pretty much not.
Yeah.
There's always, I mean, there's, the ship was a pup, right?
Well, it's, it's not really a fence either.
Yeah, you could put hot wire in there.
Well.
No, 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 no. We could teach them ready to get in.
So you've got enough direction on the fencing matter, okay.
Yeah.
And I think it's, you know, appreciate Gary bringing it up because it's, it's, you know, it's just one of those things until you, you were, we were out there two weeks ago and you go, oh, wow, yeah, you don't, you sure don't wanna fall in it.
Should he ask BX for just the northern part of the east and just a new fence all the way around the whole damn thing?
I would say maybe like on the east side, you come around 200 or 300 feet, I think someone's not gonna, I mean, just go east. Or I mean, go south.
East all the way to.
If the fencing, if the fencing qualifies for the loan.
Worth it.
Yeah, we've got Cal right next door, no better time than to get.
Well, find out what it costs, the kids went in, you know, for the whole thing.
Break it down.
Yeah. That'll work.
No, good, thank you. Next is ordinance number 854, the animal ordinance amendment to pigeons, second reading and adoption.
No changes since the last meeting. This is the pigeon ordinance, we'll allow pigeons in Del Rapids, whatever notes here. Incorporated the, what the committee had discussed, 12 pigeons allowed. Defining pigeons and then referencing the sections for, for the locks, which is basically the same arrangement for the care of the, of the birds, just like the chicken ordinance. So it's just kind of incorporated into the existing chicken ordinance, adding pigeons. Second reading.
And motion.
So.
Second. Moved by Bill to approve resolution, excuse me, ordinance number 854, mandating animal ordinance and seconded by Gary, any questions? Police officer, please call the roll.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Hock?
Yes.
Garrett?
Yes.
Chris?
No.
Meyer?
Yes.
Ron Songen?
Yes.
Burr?
Yes.
Ordinance 854 is approved. 10th Street Water Tower and the mixer.
This was, the, the previous council meeting, the council approved the painting of the 10th Street Water Tower. Part of that bid with the contractor that was the selected low bidder was the, was it EJ Criss Contracting out of Texas? Part of that was a $25,000 option associated with adding a mixer to the water tower. There is some additional information that Trent and Logan Schmidt with, with DGR has provided, kind of regarding the benefits of the mixer. There is kind of the tech spec sheet on the mixer. And then also, I pass this around, this is how the mixer sits inside of the tank. Kind of give everyone an idea of how this thing works and how it's suspended inside of the tank. So I will not say that I'm a mixer, water tower, water tower mixer expert, so we can ask Trent any, any questions. I, this was spec because this has become very standard within, within your towers. Stratification of, of the water settling is a, is a big reason to keep the circulation of the water, to keep it fresh. And then the, the second biggest reason is protecting the interior coat of the, of the water tower. When that tower ice is up, that ice moves around, will scratch your, your coating and will create rust over time. And you saw that in this tower, it's in there right now. We talked about the ladder, that was, the down ladder that was inside of there and how that's all mangled up because it's been twisted from the ice. So this would avoid ice buildup within the tower. Trent, you wanna add anything to that?
Sure, I'll, I kinda highlighted that Logan is our water tower expert. He does that primarily, work with him and just ask him to provide some input and answer a couple of questions that you guys had last time. But I highlighted most of that in my memo there. Any other questions or concerns? There are other ways to do the same thing, but it just takes a lot of work to manually cycle the water tower so that it doesn't freeze. Not very many people do that because it takes a lot of time and effort from the maintenance staff to do that. This has become the replacement for those that had problems with regulating ice in the past manually. Ultimately, it becomes a, you know, an insurance policy for your interior coating. You've got a 30-year warranty on that coating and if it gets damaged from ice buildup, you are essentially, or excuse me, you've got a 30-year lifecycle on it with a two-year warranty. So this is providing that insurance policy to try to keep it damaged from ice over that period of time, so.
You know, I went on their, the Madura, their website, there's all loads of information out there. You can watch installation, et cetera, whatever. The stratification issue and the differences in temperature and how does, can you, can you speak to that? And how, and then with the chlorination?
Sure.
And, and what customer might get out of their faucet?
Yeah, it's not a significant issue, however, with the temperature inversion and the, during the summertime, the hotter months, the chlorination will separate from the, the rest of the water. And there is a video on that website that kind of talks through that and shows you how the temperature and then the chlorine basically separates from it. The only time it would really become a health issue is if you drained that all down during the really hot months and got that into the system and it didn't mix well otherwise. To the best of my knowledge, it hasn't been a significant concern in the past, but this is another benefit. It just keeps that water cycling and at a consistent temperature throughout the tank, so.
I was amazed at, to be, you know, like an 11-degree difference in a, and this is in a 750,000 gallon tank. Yeah, or in a 500,000, one of us about the same tank, yeah.
Does Sioux Falls have these currently in theirs?
I don't know if Sioux Falls has them in all of them.
Or what towns have you worked, Logan worked with that has them right now?
Well, I can tell you that he's got six of them that he's working with out of our Sioux Falls office right now. That I, that I'm aware of, that, and all of them are being recommended for the same thing, put the mixer in it. I asked him specifically, you know, how many do it? And he says, well, about 90% of the folks that he recommends do it. I said, well, what do you think the odds are? And he says, well, I don't know a lot of people that aren't recommending the mixers nowadays. It's just, you know, you're spending the money to do the interior coating. You don't wanna fix it in 15 years or something, then you better.
Okay.
Does our newer tower?
It doesn't have one, no.
Doesn't have one?
Nope. And, you know, it's recommended we look at that too and we'll probably do that one, but that needs a new paint job.
You can hear that thing banging when we're done.
The ice.
From the ice?
Yep.
Not everybody does it, it's not a requirement, I mean, it's an optional feature, so.
It must be a newer technology than.
Well, yeah, it's just something, we're about the last five years predominantly, that Logan said when he first started doing it, he said, I didn't recommend it a lot, but now it's, it's becoming, you know, the only way to secure your.
As I said, they've proved, they've proven themselves invaluable.
This Madura company out of, they're up in Dickinson, North Dakota, and apparently they do a lot with, I mean, a lot. uh, I mean, a lot that they're there into water, various aspects of it, I guess.
Well, even in the notes here, you know, you're spending twenty-five thousand dollars for, but you have a thirty-year paint, you know, you're averaging, what, a thousand dollars a year? I mean, it's.
Yeah, and if you, if you get ice on it and you start to scrape that interior, you know, you may be up there recoding it in fifteen to twenty years and now you're doubling your investment.
They, they're pretty, pretty specific, uh, when they talk about installation and all the things that need to be done to prevent this, that and the other. It's like, is EJ Chris, are they, uh, they're, they're, they know how to do this, it's not an issue?
That is correct, yep, yep.
How much horsepower do the pumps take, or how much electricity do you cost in Europe? That's one question I have.
It's not a very big pump, but I.
Eight hundred.
Eight hundred watts, too.
It's minimum of twenty amp service.
It's a twenty amp.
Draws about eleven amps and it's nominal power consumption of eight hundred watts.
Half horsepower.
Uh, and it's, uh, motor is half, half, uh, one half horsepower stainless steel, yeah. Low power requirement, direct drive, no gearbox, no, uh, required, yeah.
So it moves enough water just to basically keep this ice free in that tank?
That's correct.
And the water, again, is?
It's a five-year warranty, yeah.
Yeah, I thought it was, yeah.
And it's got a twenty-five-year life, you know, it's expectancy with continuous operation.
Some small pumping chain.
Yep.
Cause there's some pumping, all it is.
But it's a special pump.
Well, it's quite spendy, really.
Yeah.
Some small pumps.
This thing runs, this thing runs, this thing runs twenty-four.
I understand.
Hours a day.
While we're spending the money on a thirty-year deal, I move to approve.
Motion by Mark to approve the acquisition of the GS nine mixer. Is there, and that's seconded by Bob, is there further questions at all? All favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, pause, nay. Motion to carry. Thank you, sir.
You bet.
It's amazing what you can learn. Man, all the videos they get out there about these things, it's just something. New business, petitions of AKP alley on block three, Del Rapids original. To discuss this and set a hearing date, prerogative six.
Yes, this is, uh, the purpose of this is to consider and, uh, the petition that's been submitted by the property owners. Uh, this is block three, so it's south of the railroad tracks between Clark and the Del Avenue. Um, all the property owners that sit along this, uh, alley have signed a petition. Um, the access to all of these properties, there's on the, you can tell on the west end, uh, that has been sort of used as an alley, but each of those properties have their own access off Clark Avenue. Um, so I guess all, all the, the property owners have signed, all are in agreement. Uh, therefore recommend the council, um, set the public hearing for August sixth at seven thirty PM for the vacation of block three alley.
I make a motion to set a hearing for resolution twenty eighteen dash eight, uh, for the next council.
No, no, it's just, it's just a set of public hearings.
It's called public hearing, sorry.
Moved by Bob to set August sixth as the, uh, the date for the public hearing on vacating this alley. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Chad, is there any other questions?
Is there? Firefight along that alley?
Uh, hydrant?
Yes.
It's a old backyard, it looks like to me, doesn't it?
I don't think there's a hydrant like back in the middle of the alley or something.
Yeah, I mean, along there somewhere where firefighters would need access or?
Um, I don't think back there, I don't think so.
Yes, is there any, other utilities back there at all?
No, just, nothing at all. I mean, there might be some electric or.
Nothing's sitting.
Nothing's sitting, yeah.
Is Marty Miller on one of those lots or you just put him on there because he's a neighbor?
Yeah, he owns, he owns that slides being at nine.
Seven eight, south.
Oh.
Quarter.
He's selling it to Chris.
Chris, yeah. But he lives over here, right?
See that relation?
No.
Al Chris bought that one, didn't he?
Did process.
We're gonna contract. Oh, so that's why Marty's listed.
Listened.
I know he's down there.
That's right.
Is there any other questions? All favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pause, nay. Motion to carry will be dealing with, um, August sixth. Resolution twenty eighteen dash eight, which is the DOT community access grant application pertaining to Seventh Street.
Um, the community access grant is due here July eighteenth. Uh, the city is planning this project, the southeast, uh, infrastructure project. Uh, part of that is the replacement of Seventh Street with a concrete street to access the east quarry. Um, so this fits the bill for, uh, the DOT community access grant. This would, uh, could be applied towards this project. Uh, this, the, uh, community access grant is a, is a maximum of six hundred thousand dollars. And we will be requesting that maximum of six hundred thousand dollars in the application. Uh, the engineer estimate for the replacement of this, uh, is two million, six hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars. Um, that's obviously padded a little bit with, uh, with Lance numbers. Uh, one of the factors in the kind of high cost is the replacement of the railroad. Uh, we're gonna be working with the DOT on the railroad replacement, um, and, uh, there's some issues that we need to work out, uh, on, on the railroad that we'll get into at a, at a later date. But we've put a pad in there to, to deal with that railroad replacement. If, if, if more of those costs than normal fall onto the city, uh, we wanted that number padded.
I got a question, where's the water gonna run on?
We're going east with it, we're going under the railroad.
Going under the road with water?
That's why the, that's why the railroad's gonna need work, we're gonna need an easement. We've been talking with DNI about that, through the ditch and heading east. It's the only way to go with it.
Well, then how's the water?
The stormwater, is that what you're talking about?
Yeah, yeah, stormwater, yeah, we're gonna go east with it. Then there's enough drop once you get past the railroad, because there's that creek that's further down there. We might have to upsize, uh, that LG Everest driveway, culvert over there to accommodate that, but, um.
So you're going on the south side of the road?
We'll be on the south side of the road.
So you take, you gotta go underneath the road and then head south?
Well, I think, uh, at some point, there might be a storm drain on the north side that'll pull it to the south.
Yeah, but like.
And then, and then stay on the south side of the railroad. Cause that ditch, once you get past the railroad, is, is deep enough to carry it. There might have to be some regreting of that here and there, uh, cause it's silted in over time. We've been out there with both Rob and Jack Parliament to tell them that we intend to do that, and they're, they're on board with it.
If you look at sheet J three, Gary? Yeah. The top, or the, the top half of that page has storm sewer intakes way on the left side. That's, that's the big rectangles.
Yeah.
J three.
At least printed or sideways for some reason.
So here's your intakes, then it runs down here and then the outlet into the ditch.
Oh, okay, that's where you're.
Yeah.
The bill, right here is, is the big puddle all the time.
Yeah.
So is that?
Down back to the.
It's gonna go, it's gonna have to go that way first.
Yep, into that intake itself. And with curved gutter there, sort of will help move it too.
Yeah.
That's right now, it's, there's not much of anything.
You can wash your underside of your vehicle easily.
Only one of the worst sections of Del Rapids is built there.
And you're gonna really miss the potholes.
Yeah. Concrete and chrome, chrome.
I think we're gonna go, I think we're going all the way to the tracks.
Yeah.
With the pot creek, and then we'll transition asphalt after, the tracks, east of the tracks. There's only a small section to, to the city.
Cause where does the city limit actually end?
Uh, it's about right at Del's Materials.
Yeah.
So where they stop, they're working on the road there?
Yeah, I think right around where they stop there.
Close to that. Yeah, there's a pretty obvious line where the county quit working.
Yeah.
That's city limits.
Yeah.
Still a county road, but it's city limits there.
Well, this, the, the, the section, um, Lance and I thought, or talked quite a bit about this, but the section where LG put in the big wide intersection there, we're not, we're gonna leave that, we're not, we're not out. It's got, it's got life.
Beach.
On beach there, that's got life.
So.
There's not, that would be an expensive affair to replace all that, and it's got life and we're gonna leave it.
And everything gonna need this?
But that, that was all, that was all redone when they did it.
So we need a motion to?
To, uh, support, or to adopt resolution two thousand eighteen dash eight, which is supporting, uh, application for the DOT community access grant.
I think we'll do that.
Moved by Gary to approve resolution twenty eighteen dash oh eight, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Phil. Uh, you know, if you get a chance, if you haven't, to read through the narrative that DGR put together and, and it, I think there's, uh, good statements in there relative to the use of Seventh Street, the high usage it's had this past, when they did the I twenty-nine asphalt project, et cetera, and, uh, yeah, it's definitely a, a major, uh, access. But we've been, in the past, we've been pretty lucky, haven't we, with getting some of that access?
The, the access we received for fifteenth street, for tenth street, for quartite street, so, um, and that's just been in the, I don't know if we got anything on fourth street or not, I'd have to look back on that.
We did, yeah, ninety, when we did, uh, you know, fourth to seventh, uh, I think we got one on that, so, yeah. Good.
All right.
Any questions, uh, can we have a second? Yeah, we did. Uh, any other questions? Please call the roll.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Hawk?
Yes.
Garrett?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yep.
Ron Songen?
Yes.
Burr?
Yes.
Resolution twenty eighteen dash oh eight is passed. Game fishing parks, recreation trail.
Uh, the city applied for a recreation trail project at the game fishing parks, uh, for the, the, uh, extension of the recreation trail out to the dam. Uh, we've been talking about this for several months, we worked with LG Everest, with DNI, we're out road and got access along the south side of the, of, of the Rocky Run Bridge there. Um, so we, we've, we've got our total cost on this of four hundred and twenty-eight thousand, eight hundred dollars to get out to the dam. Uh, the, we were awarded a grant from the, uh, GFNP in the amount of a hundred thousand, we requested two hundred thousand. Uh, the way this worked budget-wise is, uh, we, with our application, we had the committee, or the, the city committed to fifty thousand dollars towards this four hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollar project. The Sioux River Red Rock Trail Committee was going to come up with the difference. Um, and that was based on receiving a two hundred thousand dollar grant. So with that, now we gotta talk about if, do we want to accept this grant if we have to come up with a hundred thousand dollars? So that's what this discussion needs to be based off of, uh, tonight is, are we going to accept the grant and pursue the trail? Uh, come up with a hundred thousand, or do we deny the grant? The Sioux River Red Rock Trail Committee has agreed to, uh, upping their, uh, amount. They had, uh, committed a hundred and eighty thousand, they're willing to commit two hundred and twenty thousand for the grant. So that leaves the city with, um, uh, increasing our commitment to, from fifty thousand to a hundred and eight thousand. So that is, uh, fifty-eight thousand additional than what we had previously talked about. Um, so I'm gonna put kind of two phases on this, the way I look at it from two different angles, and I explain this in, in the memo. Uh, that's a big chunk of public taxpayer dollars to, to spend on a rec trail that is accessing a site that, you know, it's one of those, it would be great to have, it'd be nice to have, um, is it a necessity, uh, tomorrow to have that? Um, you know, not necessarily, it's a quality of life thing, right? It isn't a necessity to add to the quality of life. Um, if we're talking priorities, uh, the, you know, the Sioux River Red Rock Trail Committee knows this, too, is that, you know, the city has more of a priority of committing, of committing our public taxpayer dollars towards the, uh, old seventy-seven stretch from fourth street up to fifteenth street. You know, we get calls on that constantly, when are you gonna do something on the seventh and tenth street intersection? When are you gonna get a trail on there, um, because it's a, it's a safety issue. It came up in that, uh, Wilmark study that, that Wilmarked it here in town, um, that's been a constant thing. So if we're gonna commit public dollars, that's a higher priority than getting people out to the dam. Um, okay, so I said that piece, okay? Let's switch it over to, uh, the, the other side is, you know, these grants don't always, we, we, we haven't been successful getting grants all the time, this is a hundred thousand dollars. There was like twenty apps and only five communities got grants. So there's fifteen communities that really wanted to do a project and didn't get a grant on this. Uh, we got, uh, a nice chunk of change, they're, they're not sitting, I think they were only sitting with a half a million dollars to give away, and there was five cities that, that received grants. Um, so, we could look at being a little creative on this, is, uh, potentially, this, of course, engineering estimate has the Lance pad associated with it. Um, which, so I think if we bid it, we could see better bids at the end of the day. The other thing is, is we can, uh, maybe put two pieces, do an add alternate. You can see on the map there, it goes, it goes to Mill Avenue, and it's the greens, and then it continues over kind of where that, uh, little, it's like a road that goes down to the river past the dam. So that four hundred and twenty is for that whole section that goes all the way over there. We could add alternate that and end it right at Mill Avenue, at least get people there. Um, and then, and then we can work on the next section later on. And that Lance said would cut about between thirty and fifty thousand, if we, if we didn't go with that section. So there's that fifty thousand extra we're talking about, if the Sioux River Red Rock Trail Committee's gonna, going to, uh, commit forty thousand extra, so.
Are they still gonna go along with how much they're gonna commit if we cut back?
If we cut back, yes. Yes, we've had, I've had that conversation with them.
So if we just do the bridge, that's ninety thousand, that's the most expensive.
Yeah, you know, I asked about, about just getting a concrete trail in for a bit, getting the bridge in and then turn it to, to gravel from there. And, uh, and, uh, Randy at the game fishing parks said that, that wouldn't be acceptable for the grant. They wanna see it as, as hard surface.
So you'd be concreted?
You'd concreted.
Would asphalt work, would that be cheaper or not?
Uh, the problem with asphalt's on the, on the rock, um, but packing that in, it's different than, than, we've been, kind of been over this, whenever we're doing, we're dealing with rock, concrete works the best, clean that rock off, and then you can lay it right out. The concrete, you can form it, you don't have to have a paver in there trying to get in all the nooks and crannies.
How about if we use the bridge and set them out at the old dump?
Two hundred thousand dollars to repair that?
Yeah.
Repair it.
That might be a little overkill for going over there, but.
They'll carry the weight.
It, it will.
Yeah. Well, it's just.
We've looked at lots of different places to put that, not like costs associated with dealing with that thing or.
Well, so what's gonna be a better, how actually gonna use it? What would be a better way to use it?
Torture.
Torture?
We, do we?
It's supposedly not ours.
It's not our, anyways, it's lost to DNI.
I think it's Jay and, yeah, and, uh, what's this, uh, gentleman that passed away that was there to play together? Fixer.
Fixer, Phil.
Let's say we'll say in possession, snake tense on the law.
You're looking on city.
All right, now he's possessing.
So if we, if we bid this, when would you put this out to bids?
Not till, we wouldn't do this this year. This would be a next year thing.
But could you go out to bids early and say, hey, we're just bidding this thing early. We want it done next year.
Right.
So somebody could get a.
Get a.
Early jump on it and, and then we could see.
Lance would love to hear that one. Uh, no, I mean, that'd be something.
When you're talking early, I mean, early for us is kind of the January timeframe. Is that what you're thinking? Bid it in January or?
In the fall.
Do it in the fall. Oh, it's too late to do it now. We realize it's too late. We want it done, uh, next spring. We get it done by mid-June and.
Might get some really good bids.
Maybe get some really good bids. I'm not fond of taking another fifty-eight thousand and putting it towards that.
Right.
But on the other hand, missing a hundred thousand dollar grant and I just have a feeling that one of these days them grants might start drying up a little bit.
I agree.
The, you know, and the Sioux River Red Rock Trail Committee, this is their, they've kind of always had this one in the back of their mind as their big one. They've helped fundraise all of these years and we've been so successful in getting grants for all of these other trails that they haven't had to commit a lot of their dollars that they've raised. So this would be their big time to go and commit towards, towards the trail. I mean, they'd be paying for half of this thing.
And, you know, we're gonna be working on next year's budget and we're always trying to put some towards quality of life projects. Well, it's an additional fifty-eight thousand that I guess we know what, one of the quality of life projects we're gonna be doing next year and that would be that fifty-eight thousand. You know, we've been trying to come up with a balance of getting some quality of life projects done.
And, and, and making that area more open to people. It is, it's a cool, it's a neat area. I think there's lots of people who utilize all the damn area. They go fishing, et cetera. It always seems like there's somebody down there fishing. Uh, and, you know, it, by hoping and hoping, making that area more accessible. We, uh, you know, what, what, you know, they're down the road, they're, you know, that area could see more improvements, I guess.
Those, those really have limited potential down there.
So, but I, what I want, I'm gonna talk about quality of life stuff, back to the Tenth Street and things like that. Okay, I'm just gonna say selfishly, I have kids and my kids ride their bikes up and down and there's always crossing Seventy-Seven and that sucks not having something there. And you constantly have kids. That's where all the kids from on the golf course cut over and cut to school. I mean, that's a pretty big deal.
It is a big deal.
I mean, does that mean, does that get back turned or?
Well, I mean, that's, we haven't applied for grants on that yet. We haven't designed that, that project yet. But that's, um, this, when we, we're talking about.
Right, this is in the form of, this is already been the grant here.
Yep, and this one was prioritized over that. And so.
That ship sailed.
Well, but, I mean, that's still, that's on the chopping block. That's gonna happen. Once, once, uh, this new highway opens up and there's a trail leading up to Fourth Street and, uh, going all the way down, people are gonna be safer. When is, when are you connecting into this? That's, that's going to happen. And making those intersections safer is a huge part of that.
And that's been part, I think this could be part of the Wilmark, uh, act of work, uh, study.
Yes.
Identifying that, uh, that area along there. And I think, uh, the other thing that's, that'll be coming up, uh, will be the, uh, the transit, uh, study, right? But, uh, that, uh.
Oh, the, uh, the, the, the DOT, uh, um, uh, yeah, the, what, transportation.
Transportation study, right.
Yeah.
We, we started that, uh.
Before the projects.
Before all this other and then, and then they, uh, they, they suspended it because of the fact that traffic flow was not normal with all the detour. So that, that factors in as well and that's, uh, you know, in terms of identifying these things. And, uh, and, uh, puts us in, maybe in a better position to, for, for grant money as well.
What's that, transportation studies place?
Yeah, right.
Absolutely.
Yeah, we were, yeah, and I, I guess that's, look, what was that, that email you forward to me that's not gonna be, so maybe?
Well, we won't start that until after the projects.
Right, yeah, so, okay.
Um, but going back, the, so there's different grants. This is a recreation-based grant and that, uh, the trail going north and south on Old Seventy-Seven would be a transportation alternatives grant, which is, has more money than the rec trail does. So getting a hundred grand for a rec trail is, is a pretty big score. Um, there's more funding available for the alternatives, uh, transportation alternative program.
Sorry, I'm not trying to take away from this. I have a, you know, I think we can't scoff at a hundred thousand dollars, so.
No, the other, the other thing probably is, is, you know, I, I was never a really a big fan of this trail system to begin with, but I see the number of people that use that there.
Every day.
Yep. All year long. And the type of business that you and I are in, um, it helps draw people to town.
Yeah.
That's a good thing.
Yeah, it's enhancing, uh, it's, it's one of those things that, that for some people, it's a big deal and it, it enhances our, the whole, the overall of the community. And, and it's selling point, uh, obviously. And, you know, and if you've been down in that, that area, that's, it's just a neat area now, you know?
You're saying quality of life isn't so bad?
Hmm? Say that again.
Quality of life isn't so bad?
That started before you got in this one so bad.
Any other, uh, any other, uh, questions or comments?
Well, I think we do put that trail and it's gonna attract more people from Wilmark's and, and they're gonna spend money there. You know, it's, it's gonna be people just traveling and say, Scott and Del Rapids and see who.
Oh, so is it the smart move to just go all the way then?
Well, we can do, what I'll do is, well, we'll do an add alternate. We can decide that. You know, like we did with the, with the water tower paint. We talked about going the cheap route and then when the bids came in, the bids came in really good on the, on the thirty-year paint. We made the decision to go with it. So we can analyze it at that point.
But Trent, couldn't we bid it late this fall?
Yeah, we can. I mean, we're busy right now, which will put a little pressure on us, but we, we like low pressure, so, yep. We'll bid it this fall.
And you get the.
Yeah, I know. He's on vacation this week, so I'll call him and say, hey, get, get him off on vacation. He's got work to do, so. Yep, we, it's a, not a difficult project, just a little bit, these rec trails become time-consuming with the little details associated with them, but, um, we can, we'll make it happen.
I'll check, the, the game fishing parks has to get authorization from the, uh, from the feds and everything. I don't think that matters for us going up to bid, but it just matters for freeing up the money. And so usually that takes some time. Once they've got these, I'll check on that, make sure we can.
If there are no other questions, I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Moved by Chad to, uh, move ahead with, uh, the, uh, grant, uh, the, uh, trail and accepting the grant program, uh, award with the, uh, uh, project being, containing alternative bid items in it.
Secured.
Secured by Barry. Are there any other questions? On favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose name. Lindsay will be happy.
Yes.
Chad. Del Rapids Transit.
Um, all right, so I tried to describe this in, in, in the narrative here and it's just difficult. Um, so the, our transit is funded through the federal government, um, through the state and the state, uh, oversees those federal funds, distributes them out. Uh, and so then the state oversees the transit across the whole state. So the state is looking at our model right now in South Dakota. So this is where all of this is coming from. It's coming from the DOT. So like the western side of the state has, uh, one transit all the way from Buffalo, Bison, all the way down to Hot Springs. It's, it's under one transit authority. All the little communities in between are all interconnected and everybody has access. You know, those communities help fund it, but there's one entity that oversees the whole west side of the state, okay? You know, the Black Hills area. Uh, so they're looking at the east side of the state and they see Cissitan, they see Brookings, uh, they see ICAP. And they're wondering it, and then ICAP has five different separate transits that have their own applications where our own transit, we're just contracting with ICAP to, to, uh, do the management of it. So Del Rapids is our own transit, Brandon is their own transit, Hartford's their own transit, East Dakota is their own transit, Madison is their own transit. So the DOT has asked ICAP, would you consider putting, uh, all those transits under, under ICAP? And just call it ICAP Transit, okay? So ICAP came and talked to us. They said, what, we're doing this because the DOT wants, uh, us to approach this. Um, we're, we're telling you it would, everything would remain the same. It's just, you know, the, I guess the power kind of shifts over to their hands. It isn't the Del Rapids Transit anymore. It's the ICAP Transit. They've assured us, we will, uh, we'll work with you and you will still have a say in your hours of operation, the staffing, uh, the kind of buses that are utilized, all that kind of stuff, okay? So they're, it's kind of hard to imagine how it's gonna play out, um, but they want us to consider this. So bringing it to the council tonight to, to think about it, um, ask questions. Um, you know, right now, they send us a, a, a bill for the services, uh, and we, and we, we pay them. We submit all of our grants. They, they do all, they're all, the, the employees aren't city employees. They're ICAP employees now. Uh, we own the bus. We continue to own the bus. If we, uh, we've submitted for a transit bus grant, that would still be our facility, um, or for the, for a building grant. Uh, we'd still own everything. So it does, nothing really changes. They'd still send us a bill for, for the service. It's just that it would be under them. So the DOT sees cost savings there because then it's one application, one application from ICAP to the state so that the state doesn't have to come down and do audits on each of the five transits and go through each application individually. It's just under one umbrella. So the state thinks it'd be more efficient. It's our choice whether or not we wanna do that. Hartford talked about it last Monday and the city of Hartford decided to go with ICAP. Uh, Scott with ICAP told me East Dakota Transit and Madison have both decided not to at this point. Not sure what Brandon's going to do. Um, I've talked with Brandon and their, Brian and Brandon kind of, and I were both under the assumption or kind of came up with the idea of, can we get a year to discuss this and look at it? Think about kind of the ins and outs and how it would affect us and make a decision a year from now. And the state's okay with waiting a year. We don't have to. It's, it's, it's our decision whether or not to do this.
It's, this is, it'd be nice if this had been brought up six months ago.
Yeah, they, they brought this up and they need to know now because, uh, it's the application to the state for funding or to the feds for funding is, is in Ju-, first meeting in July every year.
So when we decide to give kids, English women lessons a free ride on the bus, does that affect that?
They, they said that that would still be our decision.
So like if I'm gonna, would, if I'm gonna get a pass, would, now you're saying everything's going under ICAP? All the scheduling, I'm not just texting or calling down and saying, hey, this one. All that facilitation is gonna go to ICAP now?
That's all done through them, through them now. Nothing, none of that would change.
I don't.
None of that would change.
So would they give us everything in writing?
Well, that's what, I think we could take a year to put some of those agreements in place. Now, I talked about, um, maybe they could form a transit, uh, committee under ICAP when all the cities that are involved are on a committee and then they can make recommendations to the ICAP board on, on how to handle certain situations, you know? That's kind of another level of bureaucracy, but then we'd have some say. We need a spot at the table if this is gonna happen, is my opinion.
Once we did it, we can't go a year from now. You know, we don't like that. We can't have that.
I couldn't check on that. I don't know the answer to that.
Why did the other two decide not to?
I think it's probably independence and wanting control of it.
I'd say this, well, wait a year, check out.
That's where I'm at right now?
I'd say this table for a year.
How are we, what are we checking out though?
Well.
Well, maybe we can see how Hartford's doing it.
And if they like it or not.
Let me, let them get any evidence if it's working out for them and I can ask them if they've had any problems negotiating any issues or getting anything to go their way. Um, ICAP's good to work with, but, you know, I mean, we're working with two people right now at ICAP that we know and have good relationships with and have the ability.
How big, how big is ICAP?
ICAP is big. Transit's probably a tenth percent of what ICAP does, the transit side of it.
If you go out on their website and I was, couldn't believe all the things that they do and involve with this, this is a big scope of things.
There was that.
Transit is just, just one little thing.
There was, uh, downtown Madison, there was a Rose Bug manufacturing building. They bought that, tore that down. There's a, they have a big office. They've got several, I think probably fifty-one employees there.
So besides the state benefiting from this?
Yeah.
What's our benefit?
They're, the guy at the state said he just wants to, us to explore this. I, I mean, I think that most of the benefit is at the state. The only benefit to us would be is that if it did create efficiencies and then, you know, that could lower our costs. But I don't know if there's any evidence that that would necessarily happen. But it could, it, it, it could lower costs.
And there, and whatever, whatever takes place between the state and the fed, federal people that might, uh, you know, if they're only having to deal with one application as opposed to five. But if Hartford agrees to do this, this next year and if Brandon wouldn't, then it's, and unless they do, then it'd be still four contracts.
There'd still be four contracts.
Cause they'd have two, two on ICAP and three not, so.
This must be the thing, cause I, I've worked with, uh, Regional Transit Authority in Iowa. And they did the same thing when I was doing them. There's umbrella to everything under there sucking up all these little towns from Okoboji to Spencer, all the way over to Worthington. So there must be some efficiency. I can't remember what their, their story was, but I helped them facilitate the, like all the software and stuff like that. So, I mean, it's, I think it's becoming a norm.
The DOT guy referenced Missouri. I guess Missouri is just one transit.
And that was five years ago.
I don't see a whole lot changing. I mean, I've thought about, I don't know what would change or make, you know, our job easier besides if we would kind of lose, I feel like losing a little bit of the control, like, you know, if we do wanna do the swimming lessons, you know, if, like you said, if Scott beats, then they could say, oh, we're not gonna do that anymore. You're not allowed to do that. But as far as my job, I mean, there's still, when they do the audit, when the state does the audit, they're still gonna have to ask things from me. I mean, everything that I give them now, still gonna have to get them.
That, that's why I was wondering how big it was, cause I know in that environment, like in Iowa, your schedulers, you're only talking about maybe four, five people and they got to know everybody. And then there was a pretty easy, you know, the people to go in and say, hey, you need to do this. It was so pretty.
Right.
Was it like?
Right.
Just a big automated system. It was hard, you know?
Right, yeah, like Brookings has an automated system. Ours would still be a cell phone call, but try to write.
So we'd still continue to own the bus then, or would they?
That's what they said, yes.
So.
So that's, I did, nothing really hugely changes, I don't think, but.
How about chances to get the new bus bar?
Well, that's, he said that we've applied for that and that if we find out on that, that would still be, that would be our facility still.
But the bottom line is if we wait till next, uh, uh, February or March timeframe to, to, to make a decision then. So that, uh, yeah, be, you know, I mean, this is last minute.
Last minute.
And, and they're, they're fine with that, no.
They're fine with that, yep.
It's not an issue and we, and, and we, I, I, I think that sounds like a reasonable approach, I guess.
What about the light ban, making the purchases if we wanna ban?
I think that, I think we would still have control over what type of vehicles we wanted to run and, yeah, all, that's what they're telling us. But like, I think if we had a year to talk about this and maybe put everything in writing that way too, rather than just going ahead and doing it, we could put a contract together that would stipulate what our, what our expectations are.
You know, he, town being on the committee.
Yeah.
Yeah, representative.
Yeah, we, I think we'd want a spot at the table.
See how, you know, how, if, if Hartford and Brandon go together, it, it, kind of get some input from them and see what, what good they'd do them, if any. You know, in six months.
Right.
No, yeah, I can, I can see, you know, if it, if it generate, if, if it potentially generates less paperwork for ICAP and the state and, uh, and then if the feds like having, only have to do with one as opposed to trying to fund various things on. But we can.
Give some kickbacks and.
Yeah.
We can, uh, next, uh, February, February or March, we can. We can, next February, February or March, we can deal with it then, right? Okay. So we got consensus on that, I believe. So the next item is the, the funding application for twenty nineteen, for our transit service.
Since, yeah, since we are not going to consolidate, we've made that decision, then it would be, we, we need to approve the twenty nineteen budget and submission of the fifty-three eleven and title three B funding. The, this has been passed out to the council, this was not included in the packet. This is the twenty eighteen, nineteen projected budget. The, look to the far right, the two thousand seventeen, eighteen budget are included on here. There is the budget that was adopted and the projected budget. So it looks like the projected budget, there will be about two thousand dollars of additional expenses on the cities, for the cities match. It jumps from that fifteen thousand eight forty-two up to seventeen thousand seven ninety-six. So it's two thousand dollars additional that the city is looking at, and that's just based on, right now, projection for the end of the year. The twenty eighteen budget shows the match for the city at six thousand seven hundred and twenty-eight dollars and fifty-nine cents. So, that's a much larger, that's a large drop from what's projected for this year. But if you go up and look at what they're requesting for the thirty, that thirty-eight thousand one forty-three, and look at what we actually are gonna receive this year, I think that that is your, your difference. We always request higher, and with the notion that we can potentially receive additional dollars. It kind of, what happens is, is what the state gets, what they get, and they distribute accordingly with, based on their formulas. So the, it will most likely be, at the end of the day, about the same amount that we are contributing this year towards the transit. This did not come in, this came in late Friday, and the email did not go into my inbox, so I didn't have this to send out to the council, so I apologize for having to look at this today. So what we do here is approve the twenty nineteen budget for the transit, so that they can submit the fifty-three eleven grant entitled three B funding.
Any questions, Justin?
What's the fiscal year on this, is it? I think it, it is, is it September? Because.
It's federal, so is it October one?
I think it's October one, yeah. Send to September.
Yeah, eighteen, eighteen, yeah. Entertain a motion. So moved by Bob to approve this middle of the budget for the state fifty-three eleven funds, as they're seconded.
Seconded.
Seconded by Mark. Any further discussion? Any further questions?
So we're, okay, the city match is what we pay, bottom line. The city, the bottom line on the total revenues.
Right. So it looks like it's gone up.
Looks like ICAP's going up.
They are, their fees are going up three thousand dollars.
So if we join ICAP, they go double?
They go down.
Any other questions? All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose nay. Thank you, Justin. We have bills to pay. We'll entertain a motion for the claims payable.
Entertain a motion, move.
Moved by Gary, that the city pays its bills, do we have a second? Seconded by Barry, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose nay. Motion, Gary. Administrator Finance Officer report.
My, myself, I attended the first meeting for the regional, the regional group of cities that the city of Sioux Falls pulls together to discuss legislative priorities, the mayor is on that group as well. So Sioux Falls brings this group together, it's Hartford, Brandon, Harrisburg, the Rapids, and Minnehaha County, that has been sitting in on these meetings. And I think last year, we passed a resolution in support of the, of the items that were, were the priorities of, of this group. It's basically just to get together, talk about any changes that might need to happen at the, at the state legislative level, and then as a group, come together, support those, so we're kind of supporting each other. There's, really isn't any hot button issues this year that, that we're talking about at this time. The group was effective last year, they did a pass, there was that sunset on nine-one-one. The, the fee for nine-one-one, that was supposed to sunset at the end of last year, and they did get that passed, so that didn't sunset. And so that was crucial for metro communications and, so the nine-one-one system. Other than that, there's more meetings coming up. This group then gets together with all the legislators in, in the region as well. So it's just, it's a good way to, to network with the city of Sioux Falls, network with the legislators, and be in discussions for what those priorities should be. Item B, some pump concerns. Didn't cross my mind, and it's, it became very apparent when we, when we had these, these big rains we've been having in June. Our, our new wastewater treatment plant, that was, the mechanics of it, we can, we can deal with seven hundred and, I think, sixty thousand gallons of water that can go through that plant. But the computer system has to be dialed in to batching that amount of water, right? So, we're, it's set up right now for our average of about two hundred and twenty thousand gallons a day. Well, that, when we had the five inch rain, it spiked to over seven hundred thousand. So, we did put it in one of those stop logs and sent it over to the equalization pond. So, we, we have our, the reason that we're getting those high flows is because of infiltration. We know we have infiltration into the system. When you've got a big rain like that, they'll, you know, everything's coming in at once, that's coming in because you got cracked sewer lines. You've got, we still have some manholes that have holes in the top of them, it's coming in the street and draining in. It's just I and I, typical ways for I and I. Now, when that rain goes away, and that initial influx comes in, and, but you keep getting infiltration, that you can always identify as being some pumps. We, we, we know we've had some pumps, people that connect their some pump directly to the sewer, they don't pump it outside of their house, mostly in the older part of town. We could get along with doing that in the past, because we had lagoons, and we just had the capacity to deal with that, and then a lot of that evaporated, but now we're paying, you know, energy costs associated with treating all of that infiltration from some pumps. So I think we're gonna have to do a push, some pump push in the community here. We put just a little blurb in the, in the bottom of the, the water bill this, this month, which nobody will see. But, we'll plan on doing a flyer to just kind of make an awareness, and do kind of an awareness push. I think eventually, we're probably gonna need to try and get into people's homes and inspect. I think that's really our only way to do it. So I kind of wanna think about that, and think about how we wanna do that, and do a big enough public push to try and get people to do that. When we did our water meter installation, I think it was thirteen, I wanna say, thirteen, fourteen, the outfit that did that had a checklist of things we wanted them to inspect when they were in basements, and some pumps was one of them. So, we're gonna pull those up, that, that up, and so we, I think we'll have kind of a place to start of places that we know, that we've identified, that do have some pumps pumped in. We never, I think we got that list, we just, we never did anything with it. So, that'll be a place to start. Other than that, it's just kind of figuring out how we wanna approach that. Communities do do this, this isn't a new thing, so we can kind of look at how other communities have approached it as well. But when we're now paying to treat all that, we gotta try and eliminate as much of that as possible at this point. So, just a point to make to everybody, and we'll be, we'll be working on that.
Does anybody know any basements they got flooded? Any basements they got flooded from that rain? There's one, straight south buzz. The, it's a cop.
The what?
The guy that's sheriff. G nine unit. His basement flooded.
We, I didn't get too many reports, I have in the past, with big rains. Like that big seven inch rain that we had for five of us, well, but there was reports then, I haven't really had many. I've heard of some pumps not being able to keep up in some of the newer parts of town, out in Spruce Glen.
Was, did you where, why, did this infiltrate, it just came up from the basement?
Came up from the ground.
Ground.
Groundsward, is what he said. Yeah. Well, he's never had some pump in his last.
In his hole?
And they moved in there. When'd you build the house?
Five, six years ago.
Never had a some pump. Never pulled in. And he said, all of a sudden, it was just born in there and comes up. He said, nothing from the outside, since it's come from the ground.
All of his landscaping goes like this and not like this.
I'm not sure.
Hmm?
I haven't been in his yard, so I don't. But, according to him, it came from the ground, so, but, what basement, I mean, that can run a lot of water?
Into the sewer?
Sewer.
Yeah, that, that.
Definitely too, that too. That's why I was asking the question.
I haven't had many people, someone off of West, West Ninth Street, and they, they live on the hill that leads into the big ditch off of Old Seventy-Seven right there. They got a some pump on one side, and the side that doesn't have it, that whole basement side got flooded out, and I think it's what you're saying, Barry. It's coming up from the bottom. And I noticed over there, a lot of, there are some pumps in that neighborhood, so we're talking about it, pump right into the gutter, and so I don't know if that's the, what you're talking about, too, or just into the drought sewer line.
Just into the drought sewer, yeah, they should go out into the gutter. That's where out of your backyard, or where, just outside of the house.
Yeah, they're supposed to.
It ends up in the storm sewer, not the sanitary.
Yeah, or just out in the yard, or whatever.
Alright, yeah, water your lawn or water.
Yeah. So, anyway.
I just brought it up, because there could have been something to do with that, too.
Right, yeah. I think it's coming in.
People's basements took on water and.
Yeah, and wa-, wash it out. Yeah, it's gonna go to the path of least resistance wherever it goes. Just two items for the, on the calendars, capital improvement plan meeting July ninth.
Seven thirty.
Yeah, seven thirty. And then setting the special budget meeting for the Tuesday after the second meeting in August. So that's the twenty-first. And let's do that at seven thirty, to go over the recommended budget. Capacities around, this is the capital improvement plan stuff. So, take a look at that over this week, and then we'll have that meeting next, next Monday, and, and kind of just talk priorities for everything. Other than that, I've got a few items on executive session where.
Could you get that one more?
I haven't put it out yet. I need to do that. I haven't put this out at this point.
Hey, get out everything you can out of there.
We'll be showing in executive session here momentarily, as the airline would like to say. Thank you, a time of convenience, I appreciate it. How many, how many subscriptions have you gotten in there?
Not enough.
Not enough?
A lot of faces here that I don't see subscription cards for, yeah. Thanks.